Like to see this, a packed room. Dr. Willitt, acknowledgement.
Yeah, so we were very lucky tonight to have to have soccer team here. I call, I like to call them the men's soccer teams. They're not boys, they're men, right? Yeah, sure. So that's the THS, so men's soccer team, and they are both the CCC champions, but also the champions of the state of Connecticut. I just want to read a brief kind of acknowledgement of the team and then kind of throw it to you for some questions. I know Tim, Mr. Kloski is here, he'd love to say a few things too. So thanks to the head coach, Mike, Dr. Mo, Bryce, Atson, and Ryan Sers, who are the coaches. The Talon Boys Soccer Team defeated Weston two to one on November sixteenth to claim the twenty twenty four CIAC Class M State Championship. They worked hard this season and came together as a team to overcome obstacles and end, um, end strong. The Talon community is extremely proud of all the hard work and everything they've done along the way. In addition to being named Game Time Connecticut Athlete of the Week, John Adagio took home the trophy for CIAC Class M Tournament MVP. Congratulations to every team member and to the coaches for helping these boys, these young men realize their goal of state championship. And I've got a couple just pictures in case you did not see them before. We just got the, the team pick and, um, and then there's this awesome poster here, and I don't know who did, but the, it's the whole team. For people at home, so everybody online can see. And then we've also got this awesome poster that was created, so something out of, you know, out of the best of them, so this is really good stuff. So, uh, Mr. Kloski, would you like to kind of throw anything else in there?
Sure, I just, um, again, I've said this to people over the past couple of weeks. You know, when you get to the level that, that these guys have gotten to, I think everyone plays really good soccer. But to win a state championship, to be state champions, you've got to have something special about the group. And in addition to being just phenomenal soccer players, they're just great, um, you know, citizens of Talon Public Schools. They represent us really well. I was so proud to, you know, have them let me be part of their journey throughout this whole thing. So, um, you know, again, just on behalf of the entire staff and THS and, and the athletic department, we're just so, you know, proud of each and every one of you. And thank you for all of your contributions this year.
I got the, uh, state champion plaque down. You guys can look at it. And, um, her superintendent, Willitt, and board chair, Tony Holt.
Awesome, thank you. If you want to show the camera this too, so, wow, you know, excuse me, it's kind of, but other people at home can see it. It's good stuff. Yes, sir. Thank you. This is going up in my office. You guys are awesome. So I got, I, did you have anything else to say before the last word?
No, just thank you for your support and, uh, you know, just talent to everyone, school community, citizens in Talon. You know, this isn't easy to do, and, um, it definitely takes the Talons' efforts. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you. So guys, how much like Ted Lasso was it? So like that kind of journey, anybody want to kind of talk about, well, I mean, this, this is pretty amazing thing, because I never had this as a young man. So you must have had an incredible experience, like you must have done something, and you'll, you'll be able to have a look back on for years and years and years. So like, what was most notable for you? What do you think you're going to carry with you? Do you get some point where you're old like me? What do you think you bring with you? That's a fun question. Any memories you want to share, anything you feel like, you know?
I think it's probably different for each of us, but it would be winning the championship with my brother, because, I mean, it wasn't something, we didn't get to play in middle school together. So it's good to play together this year and winning a championship with Austin, so.
Awesome, sure. Anything else, me, anything you're going to remember forever?
Well, like Carson as well, we both witnessed our older siblings win a championship. So it's just kind of a full circle moment to win ours.
Civil rivalry?
Yeah.
Dr. Willitt, if you could, if we could humor us by standing up and saying your name, your grade, and what position you played. I mean, my, my kids and my family are big Talon High School soccer fans, um, but I just think it's really cool. This is your time to shine, gentlemen. I hope you don't mind that I jumped in.
Please, no, and the camera will capture. I took them off the shares. So this looks like it's tiny, but people at home will do it.
Oh, okay, I'm Susie, I'm a junior after I defense.
I'm Andrew Shader, and I'm the goalkeeper.
What year?
Oh, I'm a junior.
All right, Carson, I'm a senior, I'm center back.
Graham McGurty, like our senior midfielder.
Chris Adagio, senior forward.
Sean Collins, senior midfielder.
Yeah, absolutely.
Jackson Solay, junior winger.
Jacob Davis, freshman goalkeeper.
Brian Canhouse, junior defender.
Ian Hoskins, junior defender.
Zach Gilbert, junior center back.
Zachary, I'd say, junior.
I've got a junior forward.
Gilson Adams, junior defender.
Correcto sophomore midfielder.
Dr. Adagio, sophomore forward.
Lee Surviv, junior defender.
Dylan Lewis, senior striker.
Weston Correcto, junior defender.
Jonathan Blair, junior defender.
Masai, young sophomore defender.
Charlie Seagull, freshman striker.
A lot of juniors out there. Why you have them back to back?
Yeah.
A lot of juniors out there. Congratulations.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add, multiple of us could not do, so congratulations.
I'll, I'll add, um, I played baseball all through high school. I played baseball in college. I played baseball in men's leagues up until about ten years, ten years ago, when I was thirty-eight years old, I was still playing in competitive men's league. Do not take this championship for granted. They are hard to get. Um, you know, soak this in, embrace this, and congratulate the guys. Very proud of you. The whole town is very proud of you. Great job.
Thank you.
I, I just want to thank you all for coming so much. I mean, to be in this room and have so many students and staff and parents and administrators. I mean, thank you for coming, and we do a lot of serious stuff in this room, but this is the fun stuff, so remind us why we're here to do it. Um, it's amazing looking at all of you and seeing familiar faces for a long time since I've been your room parent. I'm just so proud of you. Like Bill Sad, the community is so proud of you. Thank you for your dedication. Thank you for all the hard work that you've done. And thank you for coming out, and your parents for all the hard work that goes into helping these guys get to where they are and for coming to me too.
Mr. Swanson, Mr. Dineen, do you remember, you know, all these guys?
Oh, yeah.
I don't think I've seen a soccer now.
Yeah, no, it was great. I'm glad we put up and said their names, because that helped both of us, like, oh, yeah, that's you.
Were they doing the mileage club way back then?
And they were kind of separate, they were sort of pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Ready, go ahead.
I just wanted to say major congratulations. What an amazing accomplishment, and it's so nice to see you guys all there. I'm sorry I wasn't able to be there in person, but congratulations from the bottom of my heart and best of luck to the team next year, and you guys did an amazing thing.
So I see a few, my little leaguers, a few of my black football guys, a few guys I've gone against and play football. And I see some siblings, Merluzzo was your last name?
Oh, yeah.
I was in a class with your older sister, I believe, so, you know, this is, it is, it is a little, what's the word I'm looking for, shell shock, that, you know, kids who, when I was in high school, were, you know, this high, just like we all were, and are not doing this. It is really cool to see, whether it's, uh, the nest, who's going to control the nest, is that?
Cole's.
Cole's that attack, making those graphics for you guys, but he can't make those graphics unless you guys are out there playing. So, uh, you guys are awesome. This was fun. This is everybody, I think Jen, you just hit on it. This is our favorite part of every meeting when this happens, so bring us, bring it, bring it back, bring it back. How many of you were juniors? Can you just raise your hand? Softboards? Any freshmen? Got a boy, he's two, got a boy. Looking forward.
Thank you for letting us live vicariously through you.
And seniors, seniors, raise your hand, seniors. Bravo to you, bravo to you. I'm glad you guys were able to go out on a high note. It's awesome. So, congrats.
And from my perspective, I want to thank each of you for honoring that by being here. You know, I'm sitting here trying to soak, you know, each and every one of you in, and you're, you're inspirational to me. Being a student, being an athlete, both are incredibly difficult. Being both is, is something special. Uh, being both to the level that you've got a state champion is absolutely amazing. It's something that, you know, I'm truly blessed to be able to sit here and see each other. So thank you, thank you for coming here. Thank you for staying strong and going through this. And thank you for realizing that, you know, these next generations, these kids, my kids, are watching you and knowing that this can be done. And that you did it. People just like them did it, and they can too. Yeah, from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate each and every, thank you.
Just some credit too, that, that was done by Cole's of the Tigers, right? So Cole did an amazing job. I don't know if I've mentioned that.
And maybe to our coaches, thank you very much for all the time and effort that you've put in. Thank you. Congratulations to you.
They're, they're worth every effort, so.
Did you guys like the, like the medal?
Would one of you step up here? I want to see the medal. My, my vision's nowhere near as good as I had hoped it with the cameras.
That is really cool.
Ryan Saroy was a part of the graduating, my senior, twenty nineteen graduating bunch, so he, uh, one of the. Yeah, Ryan Saroy, he graduated twenty eighteen, uh, twenty nineteen with me, yeah. He played in the fall of twenty eighteen, actually has our, our school individual goal scoring record. Yeah, so, yeah, and as a volunteer coach, it's pretty special. He wants to come back and just help the guys out for no, you know, no compensation, he just, you know, do his best he can to do it, so. He's bright, he's smart.
Yeah, Ryan's great.
Ryan's a good dude. Quarterfinal win.
All right, now one more big round of applause. This was next to acknowledge.
Realize, you gentlemen, young men, um, know, like, what an impact you guys have on the community and, and those young kids, those ball girls and ball boys that are coming in. Driving those balls, maybe not as fast, like up against the Glastonbury game, there was neck and neck. Um, but you guys really are true mentors to the youth in the town and just really understand the impact that you guys made. Throughout this season, champions are not champions. You have a lot of fans and a lot of kids that really look up to you and want to be where you guys are one day. So, I mean, I have a twelve-year-old watching some of the girls, I'm coming watching the boys, like, yeah, they're so good, you know, can I be like that? So just admire, you know, just understand the impact that you made on the community and just as a parent who's a soccer parent, like, that's life. Uh, it's been amazing watching you guys, and you're, none of you are my kids, but I loved watching you every single second of, of this season, so congrats.
So what do we know? Doctor Hess is here too. I don't know if she, during the time of elementary school, you're, they were passing through while you were there?
Well, I remember many of them. Especially when you.
Anybody playing sports coming up? So basketball or something coming up in winter or spring? Baseball? Rec basketball? A lot of you guys do rec, rec basketball? Well, we, we also have, um, Carson and Chris were all, were named All-State players. They're recognized for All-State, and, uh, Carson, so Carson, Chris, and Johnny have a, have a banquet to go to in January. We're looking, recognized for All-State, Johnny is MVP, and Carson actually was named All, All New England, which is the second player in the Boys High School Soccer Program. Christian Reed, he's to be named All-New England, so he was recognized in that last week.
Anyone going on to play in college? Any of you seniors, you guys are, where are you going?
Uh, looking to play at Johnson and Wilson.
Okay.
In Providence, yep.
Still undecided.
Okay. Nice. Free time playing in college.
Well, you officially got more applause than anyone in this room ever. Now, the purpose is to acknowledge you, not to torture you, so at this point, you can hang around if you'd like. Actually, we do have some great things, we're doing teacher, the repair of the, here, but, um, but after that, we're doing a lot of business, so. Hang around as long as you want, but you're free to go anytime you want. Thank you, guys.
They probably got schoolwork, they got a night off. Oh, yeah.
Right in front of you, Carson.
Yeah, you guys probably.
Oh, even do a camera. What are you guys doing?
Hands by the back.
Yeah, hands by the back, smile. Take my seat. So. We don't, we don't really, we didn't really get.
All I know is shorts of the season.
It's a money grab. Because now they've got.
Dr. Willitt. All right, and so, um, tonight, uh, it's my mixture. So tonight's a very special evening because, um, you know, we get to acknowledge both the para and the teacher of the year. Uh, you know, we know that all of our staff are very hardworking, um, that they all give above and beyond every single day. Um, so, you know, we have an amazing staff, and, and every year we acknowledge some of the particularly super amazing people uh, that, that are working for the kids in Talon and for the community of Talon. So today I, I have this, the great honor of being able to introduce the para educator and teacher of the year. And we do have Mr. Swanson, um, Mr. Dineen, and Dr. Hess here as well to, to acknowledge them. So I'm going to read a, a kind of statement about each, and then I hand it over to kind of you guys to also through some things, and we also have a couple gifts and things. Um, and they did receive some acknowledgement too at the beginning of the year at our convocation and some, you know, some things there too. So, uh, we're just, we're just so happy to be able to acknowledge them. So it's with great pleasure and immense pride that we honor this exceptional individual who has been named para educator of the year. Miss Jones' journey with the Talon Public Schools has been nothing short of remarkable. It's been marked by her many years of dedicated service and unwavering commitment to our community. She willingly takes on any assignment, no matter how challenging, and is a, and as a testament to her incredible work ethic and her passion for education. She approaches each task with a positive attitude and determination to make a difference. She embodies the true spirit of a para educator. What truly sets Miss Jones apart is the care, compassion, and dedication she brings to the students that she works with. At Talon Intermediate School, her presence is a beacon of support and encouragement. She takes the time to get to know every one of her students, paying close attention to their individual needs and helping them achieve their fullest potential. Her ability to connect with students on a personal level and her genuine concern for their well-being make her an invaluable asset to the school, the school system, the children, and the community. Miss Jones' delightful personality and her unwavering dedication to her colleagues and students alike have made her a beloved member of the school community. And she is not just a para educator, she is a mentor, a friend, a source of inspiration. Today, we celebrate Miss Jones for her outstanding contributions and tireless efforts to make an impact on the lives of our kids. Her dedication and hard work have not gone unnoticed. We're incredibly grateful for everything she, she does. Congratulations, Patty Jones. Uh, you well deserved to get the para educator.
Thank you. A lot of years. It was fun to watch the boys here, and I'm sitting next to Jackson Solay, and goes, oh, but you remember me from lunch duty? And he looked anyway. But it is fun to see them grow up, and then to put names to it was really great, because we can pick them out. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, no, just like this thing said, Patty, uh, Patty's an amazing woman. I mean, so when it comes to kids at TIS, Patty, uh, nothing stands in Patty's way when it comes to helping a child. And so over the years, we've had many parents who've come in really nervous about the change from Birch Grove to TIS. Some parents actually crying as their children left, and as they, um, brought their child over to Mrs. Jones', um, the tears kind of dissipated and went away. And I can think of many, many kids over the years, and we've been working together for about seventeen years now. And Patty just comes to work every day and does her job with a smile on her face. And just like she, when you ask her if she had something to say, just thank you. That's how Patty is every day. Patty doesn't look for accolades, but, uh, we adore her, we love her at TIS. And she, the staff adores Patty, and, uh, we do like her sense of humor too.
For next, um. Okay, please say, but. No, other than Mrs. Jones, you may not remember me, but I believe you were at TMS when I was a student in the, in the TMS lunchroom.
You're going to tell me lunch duty.
Yep, and, uh, and you know what, it's, it's really cool to see, you know, I, I was just saying the same thing, I see a lot of my little leaguers. They get up here and it's weird to see and all these things. It's also cool to see as a student, your teachers and, and, and your educators get acknowledged for who they are and what they are. So, uh, this is really cool to see, just remembering, what, ten, twelve years ago in TMS lunchroom or TIS lunchroom, one of the lunchrooms. You know, I'm telling you, brain farting all over, uh, and it is, it, it, this really is special, so thank you for everything you do. This is, this is, this is, this is exciting.
You know, as, as one of those parents that Mr. Dineen talked about, that probably was crying when I dropped. My, my youngest off of TIS coming from, from Birch Grove, you know, I have, I'm so thankful for each and every one of the, the adults, such as yourself, that give up your time and of your energy and have done that for so long. You know, as you mentioned, all of these, these young adults that were in here and the, the hundreds and thousands of them that are out there that had fears, they, they had struggles, they had good times, they had bad times, but they owed every bit of that, every, every magical moment to the, what you were willing to give. And, you know, as we, as we acknowledge your, your role as para of the year, I want to thank you for every other year. Because while you may not have gotten the flowers that year, you did something amazing. You did something absolutely beautiful, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Everybody?
Yeah, for John. Um, yeah, thank you so very much for everything you do. Um, certainly not lost on me or, or any of us. I think that it's been a tough few years for our staff at the schools, you know, pairs and teachers and everyone else. Um, so thank you for everything that you give to our kids. One of my sons relied heavily on pairs and in my eyes, you've pretty much run those schools. Don't tell them I said that. But, I mean, they couldn't get through the day without you, and I just hope, I mean, I've got two, one of them might have given you a hard time in lunch, but I think the other one was. Try not to take names. But thank you, thank you very much, and congratulations. Well, thank you. I always want to say something, um, you know, um, no, thank you for everything that we do. I mean, it's truly amazing, um, what our student, what our staff is doing for our students every single day and the one-on-one connections we have with those students and the impact that you made. Um, I'm sure you, you, you see it in every day when you see those kids coming in, but the impact that you've made on the students' lives, it's just lifelong. And what you do, being a para educator of the year, is, is phenomenal, as Tony said. You know, thank you for last year and the year before and the fifteen years before. Um, what an impact that you probably made on several of those young gentlemen, uh, that were sitting in the room. It's going to be with them for a lifetime, so congratulations on that. And please continue to do what you're doing, because you're making some, some young, our future of America smile. Thank you.
Uh, and so next up tonight, uh, the honor of introducing and acknowledging friend of Merstick. Merstick, she is an amazing educator. Um, we had a convocation as well and received the teacher of the year there. Her commitment to students' well-being and learning is unwavering, is an exemplary educator and a member of the BGP preschool team for more than nine years. She brings a smile to work every day. Um, she reassures everyone there of her dedication and stills confidence. It's really one of the individuals that really keeps the school going, frankly, uh, and adds so much value to the preschool. The SEL programming as well, she just continues to lead in that building and has done so for, for many, many years. Um, during the last nine years, she's worked closely with preschool teachers to integrate social opportunities for all students. She's an excellent resource. She's an excellent resource for our team as she provides a lot of guidance and leadership. Her team describes her as an invaluable member who puts great effort into helping all children daily. That her colleagues have a high degree of respect for her and admire her and share it regularly. Ms. Merzick is a fantastic, uh, has a fantastic way of connecting with the younger students in the building. She's able to get the very best out of each and every student. It's remarkable to see the level of independence and learning in her classroom. She is, uh, an amazing individual with extensive experience working with the young students and helping them with behavior challenges as they grow, uh, and as they are becoming who they will eventually be. Um, she promotes small group learning opportunities and she was great with differentiation and makes the classroom challenging for all students, no matter what their background, where they come from, or what level they start at. Ms. Merzick teaches multi-sensory, engaging, rigorous inquiry-based lessons that promote a high degree of student knowledge and understands the importance of teaching lessons rich on student discourse, promoting communication opportunities with the kids. She's always looking to build real-world science experiments in her classroom, which as you can imagine, it's a little kiddo. It's not a very easy thing to do. On many occasions, you can see students digging for, uh, digging in the mud, uh, for letters or digging for fossils in the sand or catching feathers, being moved by fans, creating art projects or working in any, in many highly engaging center activities. She integrates healthy eating into her instruction with the use of a garden. She grows vegetables with the students from the home every year. And last year, radishes and carrots, right? I mean, can you imagine, do you, can you just visualize this room with feathers and mud and carrots? I just want to go there myself and spend. Uh, Ms. Merzick's leadership and collaborative spirit are truly commendable. She was the first staff member to take on the ruler initiative, uh, ruler, yell ruler is our S E L, social emotional learning. She began piloting the program. I've relied on her as a resource to help me understand that and help rule out aspects of it to the entire district. She has a cheerful disposition and a positive attitude that's truly inspiring. It helps every one of us every day. She's a self-starter who offers solutions and address concerns in the building, works exceptionally well with the colleagues and everybody around her. She works with teachers, therapists, consultants, parents, and she just is able to lead them all. She is responsible for facilitated meetings and data and just, just nothing that she, um, you know, doesn't do and, and everything she touches is better. And she helped us with C T S training, which is a huge transition for us into a new special education program from the state. Uh, so it's just, there's nothing that she hasn't made better by being involved with. So, um, thank you and congratulations. You don't have to. And I know we've got some people who want to.
I don't have anything. Right. It might be a speech or a complication. Sure, just, um, Patty, us and Brenda is preschool teacher and she falls under the umbrella of people services. And I remember the day we got her. And I remember the day that I sat, looked at her and thought we were, we, we found her. We found who we were looking for. She has not only been a leader in, in the building and a leader in the program. She's our most neediest students first teacher outside of the home. And, uh, I couldn't be more proud of that and, and, and more proud of her. She, she takes our kids at need so much and says, please, provides everybody what they need, moves everybody along. And you go into her room and you don't know who, who, and everybody's learning and everybody's happy. And it's because this woman can do this. And then she does it with our staff too. She says, oh, they have this new program supposed to do that. Let me show you how to do it. And she's unbelievable. And it, I just want you guys to know how talented this woman is and how lucky we are to help.
For that, we'll say the same things that, uh, Dr. Will and Dr. Hess were saying. Uh, Brenda's amazing. Um, what a gift to Birch Grove to have her. Uh, some of the things that we were talking about in our classroom, you can go in her room and there's all things going on and this one's making this noise and that one's doing this and they're going around and, and it's just so, it just comes together. And the learning to see what three-year-olds are doing is amazing to be in that. I, I have the good fortune of going into a room anytime and I just see it and it's amazing the things, you know, ten minutes on the rug, they're doing their morning meeting and move on to something else. And she keeps them going and it's just amazing, uh, the things that she does. And to our ruler program, uh, she was the first one, our staff were like, oh, what's this about? She dumped right in, she started piloting it with the three-year-olds so she could speak to the staff and say, hey, guys, I got this. This is what we're doing with the little guys. So then the, you know, upper grades went, okay, I can do this. And so, uh, just amazing. One thing that we didn't talk about this, she'd made an improvement to our building just recently this year in our parent pickup uh, line. Some of you know about our parent pickup line. Brenda helped make an improvement to it, make it even better. So she has actually put some more systems in place to help us and organize it. She got the children all organized and out they go and, and she's just a leader in our building. Uh, from everything she does, anything she gets involved in, um, she's truly a leader. And the adults in the building, you know, aspire to be like her. Uh, the students, she's got such a student focus so that when Brenda's talking, I'm listening. Cause I know that she's, she's advocating for the children and that's just how Brenda runs every day. Uh, so we love having her. She's a gift to the town public schools, like you were saying. So I love having her and she's amazing. And the kids get so much and the community, uh, benefits, it sort of is the students and the families of talent, uh, the things that she does. She's always creative, always thinking of something with the short period of time that she's been with us. So what a gift, um, and we love having you. Thank you for all you do each and every day. That's very cool.
Can we get a picture of both of you up here in front of the seal? Would you guys like to join? The only thing to watch out for is all of the wire. Approach from the left. Go around this way. It's a lot of wires.
Jim and I, I honestly think like, well, so we have flowers for you too. You guys are going to go home with them too.
The board just wants to make a, one or a couple more comments if you guys are okay.
We heard that, Tom.
You weren't eating your kindergarten boy.
Before you leave, if we could just. Just one more thing.
We can't let you leave without saying something with Merzick. So thank you for everything that you've done. Congratulations. Um, I just want to say from all my years of, of being around you and seeing you with all the littles, it's, it's really unbelievable, as Patty said, that you bring these tiny little people in and you, you really turn them into students. And what you do in your classroom, you know, being able to see you as a volunteer. And then we did rounds in your room as, at the board and, uh, even though Tom interrupted and caused chaos. Man, you can bring those kids back in a second. And it was just exciting and heartwarming and, um, loved every second and we all did. But, um, but again, you know, there's no one who probably knows better than you. You know, our, our kids coming in, you know, since COVID, you're bringing, you're bringing them into the world of education and, uh, you're doing such an amazing job. And I just want to thank you very, very much and congratulate you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome back in preschool at any time.
You know, I love a good craft.
Thursday on Friday.
All right. Well, you heard, I got invited. I can go. Just say, because we have the opportunity, we don't get to see Tom and Jim and Patty that much and we get to see them in budget and that's not always so fun. Thank you for everything you do. And it's a, you know, our teachers of the year, our pairs of the year. You know, it's a testament to who you are as leaders of these schools and everything that you do for our staff and our students. And so I just want you to know, A, how much we love seeing you. You know how much we love seeing you. Um, thank you for taking, you have such busy, busy lives all day at school. And I know we're taking more time from your family, but you're here and you're here because you support your people. And, uh, that's clear and everything is.
And I just want to say, and then I, I keep going over, in fact, I had to write it down with Dr. Hess said there, the, the first teacher outside of the house. You know, to, it's thinking back to all four of my kids, to my little one, that the control that I thought I had. And then I bring them to the school and like that. And, and somehow you take that to eat and mold what later becomes, you know, our seniors, our, our college students and our, our society. You, you give them that launching pad that is so critical and it's so important to who they're going to become. And you know, the most amazing thing is what I'm hearing, you don't stop there. You build your, you build the school around you. You build your administrators, you build your teachers, you build your superintendent, you build all of us. That is so incredibly special. And that's a quality that I can't describe, but I sincerely wish more people had. Thank you.
Now, you were, you were mentioning something about short day on Friday and I'm really intrigued. Jay was ready for this. Days are like shorter items or we, you know, are we shortening clocks or we, you know, we're not shortening ourselves. You know, I was like, you know, but, uh, no, we, I think we toured last year. Uh, the buildings and I look in a room and I see a, you know, a port being, and I'm looking at them. Is that a port? And I think Jen or Dan, one of you said, yes.
Did you join in?
That's a port. I wanted to, you know, but, uh, that's the type of, you know, again, that's the sort of commitment that I was looking for always, you know, from my teachers. And so that is exciting. That's a fun way to learn. That's, oh, I hope there are pictures. I want to see ports, man. I want to see how i- innovative these things are. So that's fun. That's fun. Have fun with that.
It's my first time doing four day preschoolers. We'll see.
Gotcha. So maybe it was the kindergarten hallway. I, I forget where.
Yeah, we did.
It was definitely somewhere. Gotcha. That's exciting. Words are popular and words we pay. More, more popular than shorts. So.
We had, I have pictures from yesterday taken on the show.
Ports. The good stuff. Structural integrity, all these different lessons.
Triangles.
Triangles. There you go.
I think that would thank.
And then you get in, you're free to stay as long as you want. We don't torture you.
Thank you. Thank you for making your time.
Me, I want to see some of those sports. Now that Jayden just blew up open discussion with the thought that there's a half day in front of it. Full day on Friday. We have a half day.
When's the pajama day?
That's a Friday.
Oh, Friday.
Fourth day.
Oh, after pajama day.
All right, Dr. Willis, moving on.
So the next, uh, uh, item again, tonight we have some great acknowledgements. I do want to just take an opportunity to, um, thank, uh, Lynn Hebert. Uh, we can take a look at the screen. She had donated a number of things to our music program that the music teachers desperately needed. And it was in the memory of her late husband, Chris Hebert, who is a longtime, uh, music educator. So just wanted to take an opportunity here to, um, and to thank, not Ms. Hebert, for, for taking, for taking the, uh, you know, the time and giving us the materials that helped, helped the kids really be able to engage in the program from books to stands and light and other equipment. It's not easy to get some of this stuff and so, you know, it was greatly helpful to us. So the entire music program, I recognized her and the staff of the music program all signed a special letter thanking Ms. Hebert for it. So I just wanted to make sure we gave, um, official recognition as.
And thank you. Pass on our appreciation as well and it's, it's very, very giving. Thank you. All right. Do we have any additions to the agenda? So moving on, I will entertain a motion for the approval of the November twentieth, two thousand twenty-four minutes. Discussion? Right? Jayden?
Aye.
Brendan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
All right, Jen?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public participation. The members of the Talon Board of Education, welcome the members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments during points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow-up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting. If you would start with your name and address for the minutes. Those online, feel free to raise your Zoom hand, those in the room, step forward and the owl will identify you.
I'm sad without people with those cares.
The energy. Uh, again, just for a second, if you would like to speak, please raise either your virtual or actual hand. Hearing none, we'll close public participation. Correspondence, Mr. Secretary.
Two emails came in last couple of weeks. One concerning, um, budget and superintendent focus goals that we discussed last meeting. And interesting one concerning litter boxes in school that superintendent, um, responded to and took care of spelling the word.
Excellent. Right? With some information. But any like, Dr. Willis?
I would, I would just say we did a lot of acknowledgements this evening, but I want to also point out that Audrey and Sarah are, are here all the time. You know, we should really, I just want to make sure we say thank you to you.
Thank you.
You bring the student perspective and to really, you, you contribute and give something that we would otherwise not have. So thank you.
Is it two?
This is my third.
Every year I've been here, you've been, I think you've been in this room with. We're in this thing together. We've been trying to keep a straight face when Audrey starts laughing.
Think that you're leaving next year, right?
Oh, no, I'm back every day. Yeah, everywhere.
Local school, local.
That's called Starkout.
I was just going to say, it's a perspective that us elders need when deciding for you guys on, on things. So your perspective is valuable. Whether you think we hear it or not, we absolutely hear it and it's valuable and important. So thank you.
You were refreshing to the word. I like the personality you've written. Some sass, some strength and again, you're a good shot of our future. So thank you.
Speaking of these two. Your report.
All right. Last Friday, we had Talon idol, we had a total of five acts and Girls Across were the overall winners. We also had Penny Wars last week and the sophomores won.
Uh, we had our first meet meter Monday on the morning announcements last Monday. It seems to go pretty well. It's very easy. You scan something, you go out of form, that kind of says what, how you're feeling. It's going to happen every Monday from now on and. You scan something, you go out of form, that kind of says what, how you're feeling, gonna happen every Monday from now on and, uh, we'll see how it goes. And also on December sixteenth, uh, Talent Business Pathways will have a speaker present about Bitcoin and the future of cryptocurrency.
Also tomorrow, there are club and senior superlative pictures and seniors, your capping gown fittings are during lunch.
And then DECA practice competition is next Thursday night, next Tuesday night, next Thursday night.
Seventeen?
The seventeenth. Okay, yes. Jayden will be there, I will be there, Jayden will be judging me. So that's gonna be a lot of fun and then our first round of mock trial competitions are that Wednesday. Next Wednesday, mock trial is not officially within TPS, but it does include almost primarily uh, talent public, talent high school students, so it's a really big deal for us, we're going off to Hartford, um, we're gonna win. And it is going to be a lot of fun. And also, I would like to advertise Port Day for high schoolers. Also, I, um, work very closely with the Connecticut Children's Foundation that puts on PJ Day. I'm one of their all-stars this year, so I do a lot of fundraising and a lot of promotional stuff. It's the first year that every school in Connecticut, every public school in Connecticut is doing this program, it's a big deal, it's very exciting. Uh, so go donate your money, go wear your pajamas, um, and yay, PJ Day, any questions or comments?
Move meter Monday.
Yes, so it's more with our SEL learning program. Uh, so mood meters have been put around, uh, Talon High School, have they put, put around the other schools, I'm not, yes, they have. Um, and it's based off of Yale Learning, based off of Yale Learning. Um, and it's a really simple way to basically know how to express how you're feeling. So there's red, yellow, blue, green, and then a bunch of different categories within those. Uh, Mr. Willis can probably tell you more about that if you'd like, but every Monday, we're doing it on the morning announcements to kind of center ourselves at the beginning of the week, see how we're feeling and go from there.
They're using it to kind of touch base on, um, and learn kind of more about emotional regulation and, and, you know, when you're feeling certain ways, what are the optimal? You know, what are the optimal emotions for certain tasks and, you know, so this is the beginning of their journey on this. Uh, and, and the part that they're doing right now is really just being able to first express kind of like, well, you know, I'm feeling a little antsy this morning and then talk about where they are on this mood meter, which is a chart. And then be able to reflect on the best strategies for that day.
So they scan a QR code and then type in something and submit.
Yep, and then, uh, Mr. Poland usually films a video, he'll go over a few scenarios. Um, and how to like navigate those and in the future we'll be having like student videos that'll be on the morning announcements kind of with their own situations. Um, so it's really just about different emotions and how to handle them in a way that's productive.
Uh, is it possible maybe on Thursday afternoon, you can send out an email or a text blast for the pajama fundraiser thing?
Yeah, yeah. Cause it's Friday, right?
Yeah, it's Friday, yeah.
All my daughter could remember is, I need to bring a donation. Any other comments?
Have a great night.
All right, committee reports. Communication.
Last month's meeting, we haven't had a meeting since, so, uh, we'll be picking back up in January for some fun budget communication, another information.
I'd be excited, all right.
We'll have some, maybe next week, uh, update on the PTO while speaking my association.
All right, curriculum? We have not met this month. Policy?
It's okay, it's a pass. We're, we're having a meeting in January. No updates since last year.
Uh, don't see Dan in the negotiations?
Nothing at this time.
Person's report, so nothing written in the interest of brevity. Uh, the only thing I want to talk about, obviously, as we're all aware, you know, budget, the official budget season starts very soon. We are already starting to receive the, you know, you know, in communication on that, well, I sincerely open, you know, I want to reach out and ask everybody with a thought, an opinion or an idea, I do want that communication. Uh, the one thing I'd ask is I'd like everybody to remember that each and every person involved in this process comes with the best of intention. That, that we're, all of us here are going into it with an absolute love and desire to do best for our children, for our community, for our, for our neighborhoods. And while, again, I hope and I'm certain, we are going to see just the gambit of perspectives. And we are going to see ideas and thoughts on how we should do it all across the spectrum. And I want us all to remember that we can and are very successful at disagreeing respectfully. Uh, I hope the community, the council, us, everybody involved, our, our staff can walk out of this regardless of what the budget ends up being, feeling like they contributed and it was a positive environment. Your rest, we're gonna have a lot of time, a lot of fun. Okay? Thank you. Dr. Willis, superintendent's report item K one.
Right, so W F P A means within fiscal year position addition. And so in the past, um, we've had FTE reports when the Board of Ed has, um, gone through its budget process, superintendent's proposed budget has an FTE page and then Board of Ed, uh, adopted budget has an FTE page. And the thought was between the time of the budget presentations and so on, adoption and vote, sometimes between those two times, there are some fluctuations. And when the fluctuations occur, I wanted to create a process for which you can be made aware of them and why. So in this case, um, this is a one point oh FTE BGP special education teacher. The special education case load numbers have, um, gotten the highest that we've ever seen them. And we're in a process of engaging with that, managing it. Uh, at the same time that that's happening, we had an excellent accountability, uh, we talked about it in the curriculum meeting, I think of the last one we had. Accountability scores were good, we're in the top five, we've gone in ranking, we're closing achievement gap, but at the same time, we're still dealing with, uh, a lot of kids coming through the system that, or coming into the system that have special needs as they enter the system. So, um, because there is such a high level of them, we are under IDEA required to, uh, provide services at a certain level, you know, the kids' I E Ps are like contracts with the district. So it's gotten to the point where as we're having the, you know, identification meetings, um, and, uh, and identifying kids for services, we just didn't have enough people to provide the service and we had to react to that now. So the way that I handled it is, um, we are going to be able to reimburse at least eighty percent of this position from the academic and social support grant. Uh, so, um, at this point, I've written that I secured it, um, actually just secured it, finalized it the other day, we have that. Um, so our academic and social support grant will cover eighty percent to ninety percent of the cost of the position, but the rest of the position would be something that we would be absorbing. Position is probably about fifty-five, three eighty-five, academic and social support and with some added elements, uh, two other grants that I filed for at the same time. They're about sixteen hundred dollars each, will bring us close to the forty-three, forty-four, brings us into that eighty or ninety percent coverage. So that's the short version of it, but these are the kinds of things that we can't go without, um, fulfilling those I E P obligations. And, you know, this was something that we had to do to do that.
Questions?
Yeah, so I'm just reading this financial summary, I'm, I'm confused or I am confused there. It says estimated fifty-five, three eighty-five grant reimbursed at greater than eighty percent beyond twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And then we have a slasher, fully funded for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, so I was supposed to say fully funded for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six or?
Yeah, it's, um, yeah, it, it, it should be that we will be able to fully fund that in the future. But, um, that should say the next year, but this is, at this point, well, the reason why it says it this way is because we're going to be hiring into the school year, normally this would be eighty percent to ninety percent of the position. But it will cover the whole position this year because we're hiring in November, hiring the person in like January. So normally it would be at equal to or great, you know, greater than or equal to eighty percent of the coverage of that position, but this year it will cover the whole thing. I just didn't want to say it was covering the whole thing without giving you the understanding that the grant covers about eighty percent of it typically.
All right, thank you, that answers my question.
Other question? Dr. Willis, I have one, so, and it's maybe just conceptually speaking. So recognizing that the workload is gonna go up and down depending on, on the students. So in this case, when a workload went significantly up, made the decision to hire a, a person in, are you anticipating a higher level of workloads, we hire a permanent position? Or would you normally hire just a one year to cover that year's requirements?
Well, the, the grant is, is in perpetuity and so this would be in perpetuity unless we don't have as many kids involved anymore, which is highly unlikely. We can make adjustments, but it's highly unlikely that we won't need this. All the way through, this group coming in is gonna keep.
So we're anticipating the need remains.
This, this bubble will, will walk every grade, you know, every grade, this bubble will go up. Um, special education right now is a major challenge, M T S S is great when we are intervention, which we talked about, it's greatly needed to help offset it. Um, it's not just here, it's, it's everywhere, um, but you know, IDEA and I E Ps, these are things we do not want to play around with, we want to make sure we're in compliance with.
Where's the A S S G grant money, where, is this a state organization or what is this?
Crack open choice program, it's one of the grants that I filed for under, uh, we're eligible for it because we're part of Open Choice. So I file for that every year, I just, like, just finished it the other day for this year, so it, then we get a reimbursement. So something around February, March, April, we'll get that money reimbursed to us.
That's from the state though, or a federal?
It's state.
State funds, okay, thank you. I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Willis. New business item L one.
So L one, catch up here, is the monthly financial report, as you are aware, the first meeting of every month. Uh, we do the monthly financial reports about budget balances, uh, seven hundred and four thousand one hundred thirty-five and thirty-three cents of, um, the end of last month. Couple of quick things up and down, try to be synced with it. Um, salaries code one ten, they're under, um, substitutes, I believe, covered overtime is over budget by ten thousand two twenty-eight. Uh, we needed a lot more custodial subs than we typically would. Um, it's important to note that codes one thirty and one thirty-nine are for overtime. And we still have, um, some of the summer salaries for maintenance and custodian staff, object one thirty-six, one thirty-seven. Custodian subcodes are also one thirty-nine, so for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, we're going to be moving the substitute codes, uh, to kind of be a little bit easier to read. But the short version of all of it is that altogether, we're about over by ten thousand and it's mostly because we've had to bring in custodial subs. For some reason, our, our workforce has been pretty sick this year and, uh, sometimes that happens, I'm not sure exactly what's going on and cuts some term things. So that's, that's affected us. Um, stipends over budget by fifty-one thousand, oh fifty-four ninety-one. This is not a typical right now, um, I mentioned this in the past, this is something that we've talked a little bit about before that, um, there are some special education ones in there that, um, that need for coverage of special education. Also, clubs, activities, things like that, don't always post right away, so fall, winter and spring, we're always catching up to that. Um, and then there are, um, there was that transportation need, if you remember last meeting, we talked about the transportation club. That's another one, so some of these have caused an overage in that line, but it'll balance out some of the other lines when we get to the end of the year. And we've been watching that carefully, but that, you'll notice that that stipends is over budget. Um, health and disability insurance to ten is over budget as well by about ten thousand. Uh, last month it was about seven thousand four, so this'll continue to change based on the vacancies and things like that. Um, professional ed services, which is three twenty, it's over by about three thousand, last month it was nine thousand. Um, most of the funds are because of special education services. And so this will continue to change as we have special education services and contracts, um, change and so on. So these are just things to keep in mind as you go along. Another thing that can impact things is, um, we are looking for a school psychologist at Birch Grove and we have been, um, we and twenty-six other districts are looking for school psychs right now and the state of Connecticut is as big as it is. So we're gonna have to start using consultation services, which will cost money and more and it'll, you'll see that consult line start to rise, things like that. So, um, that'll be happening in the next couple of months where you'll see some of those things, uh, change and rise and we'll have to balance them with other budget lines that, um, you know, that, uh, for instance, we're not hiring, right now we don't have the site, so money we're paying the consultant will be somewhat balanced by the salary. Uh, tuition is over budget by twenty-two thousand, uh, four fifty-four, last month it was about seven thousand seven hundred. Um, this can dramatically change based on enrollment and tuition changes, so that's, that's not that big of a fluctuation. And it, uh, probably will be going up as we go along in the year. Uh, we did get a benefit though, the state of Connecticut is actually giving, uh, districts uh, more money back, uh, in that it's not charging us as, us as much for some of the magnet charter charges. And that's gonna shift, so there'll be some money that we, uh, are able to, to benefit from in the future that, uh, was a very recent change. And so that will help out some things out too. Um, and hopefully that'll be in perpetuity, I don't know, but that was a, that was a good thing, um, that the state did. So I'm not sure the genesis of it, but we'll see that at some point benefit us and I'm thankful for that. So that, I'll stop there, that's, those are some of the really over items, the rest of them are, are, um, you know, under budget, so to speak, but we're, we're in December, January, this is for December. This is for November, so it's, you know, we got plenty of months in the year to incur costs and things.
Can we have, um, maybe for the next meeting or maybe even the one thereafter, just a little update on whatever this additional funding the state is providing us, so we all have a sense heading into the budget on what if we talk in ten thousand or a hundred thousand or what is being sent to us for and whatnot?
It's just charging us, but I'll, I'll bring, I'll give you, I, I can post that on the dashboard too.
They're kind of like. But, um, Dr. Willis, for the, um, the custodians, did we, um, was it last year or year before that we, when we eliminate a custodian position? We've, we've reduced, right, over the last couple of years? Do you think that that is also contributing to us have to lean on subs more?
I don't, I don't think so, I think it's just we've had a rough, or whatever, we had a hard start with illnesses. We lost a custodian at the end of the year last year too, you know, it's just gonna take time for them. Health wise, I mean, it's never, it's, it's a harder job whenever we lose staff. So that could be part, I guess, you know, more exhaustion, that type of thing, but, um, I, I think we just, sometimes we have a year where sickness is worse than others, they're the ones dealing with the cleanup.
And we have a student custodian group at the high school, right?
Well, we, we don't use, uh, that's for, yes, for subs, if they're a certain age and for the summer or that type of thing.
That can help in situations like that.
Um, as they're old enough to sub, it can, I mean, it can help in terms of getting a person if they're old enough to do so. But, you know, the fact that we have to incur them, because the other ones are sick. I think we, we had a tough start with a lot of people sick and then when they're sick, we'll be able to clean up our sick and that just cascades a little bit.
And the other question was, you mentioned, um, that we still, we don't have a, um, school psychologist right now at Birch. Um, from my recollection, I don't think, obviously names change, but we don't have a guidance counselor at Birch and you have your, or do we now?
No, you have a social worker and a school psych.
Okay, so.
But they, and the social workers grant position that I wrote a grant for, um, so right now it's bringing me the social worker that I wrote the grant for, but, um, it's tough, I mean, school psychs, they're, everyone is looking for them. Like I said, there was, I think last they looked, which is granted two weeks, but it was twenty-six openings or something and we're all buying for the same market of people and there's just not enough. And there's just not enough of them. Uh, UConn graduates a handful a year or whatever, but we're not, there's just not a ton, they're not out there now. So it'll be a challenge, but we'll get, we'll, we'll get something. And they do neuropsych, I mean, I'm sorry, they do, um, testing, neuropsych usually are, are something that you could do, but we generally, um, that's contracted. They do a lot of the testing, uh, for the P P Ts, yeah, you know, I P data.
Awesome, good. Other question? Thank you, Dr. Willis. Public participation, limited to items on this agenda. Again, if you're in the room, feel free to raise your hand, if you are online, raise your Zoom hand, please begin with your name and address for the minutes. Going twice? Those in public participation points of information. Jayden, I probably should have asked this in the financial report, so I apologize, but, um, I, this is more so curious. In terms of federal dollars, those are dispersed very. Very different, differently, I'll call it, from the federal department of education. I'm curious, with a lot of talk about, you know, say disbanning a department of education at the federal level. What does that do in terms of Title One, that funding, how much of that do we actually get? Do we get any? There's a sheet that I've been tracking it down for the past like week, and I can't find it. There's a sheet that tells us S R grants from here, from here, from there, from there. I'm curious as to sort of what to expect from a, from a, a federal standpoint, heading into the next budget cycle. Um, especially after January twentieth, right, after a lot of these things start to kick in, I'm curious. What do we get? What is, what is, what is the likely difference between? Twenty-four, twenty-five, or twenty-three, twenty-four, to twenty-four, twenty-five, or twenty-five, twenty-six? Um, and is that gonna be a huge sort of gap that we're gonna be missing out of our budget, or not at all?
Well, um, it's really hard to say, we get Title One and Title, uh, one A and two A. Um, you know, I complete those each year. And, um, what happens at the federal level, a lot of times the funds that are put aside are put aside because of legislation, I D A requirements and so on. Um, so I, I don't know, I honestly don't know what will happen in the next four years. On Title one A, we get sixty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars, but that's what we got fiscal year twenty-five. And title. Go back to. Funding applications, and these are all the ones that, when I talk about, these are the ones that I'll apply for, for us, you know, um, Title two. Is twenty-seven thousand two hundred and seventeen, okay, so it's about ninety thousand. So I, I think that's mainly legally obligated from laws, but.
So not much impact happening in town, essentially.
It's not going to, I mean, every, and losing ninety grand would not be great, I doubt we will, but.
Right, yeah. Well, I just see a lot of, I see, I was just having a conversation today, I see a lot of the impact affecting the secondary education market before I see. Leaking in the public education. See, but thank you, that was, I was, I've been going back and forth on that for a little bit, so thank you.
I was wondering, Dr. Willis, if, um, there was any type of update on S R O parameters?
I was talking to Mr. Foley today, man, he said that they are close to an agreement with this.
And then, once that goes into effect, that agreement, what's, what's the timeframe, what?
So assuming the town would let us do a forty hour, we could advertise right away.
Okay.
Assuming that, that the two things that need having a desk with the town and then us with the town, but us with the town should be easiest. If everybody, if it, if everything evolves the way that everyone's saying, everyone, you know, then should be pretty straightforward. We should, we'll just sign a new M O U, it'll be forty hours, and we can start putting it out there, which then I think we would get quite a few candidates.
I have a reason, go ahead.
We got, it was a good question, that's what I'm making sure. Um, I don't think I've smiled this hard in a board of ed meeting in a really long time, like my face does. It was an awesome and fantastic, right? Uh, it was great to see our educators here, it was great to see our administrators here supporting our educators. Um, you know, the, the athletic department supporting our champions. Um, and so many of those champions, I was able to attend, um, the Fall Sports Award. And so many of those champions not only got all these other awards, all conference, all whatever, but there was so many, I. They were, it, it almost seemed like the entire auditorium went up to the stage for the scholastic, the scholar athletes part two. And I don't think people understand, I mean, unless you were an athlete, or you were in, in the band, or doing the drama, or doing the extracurricular things. What it takes to, to do all that, plus maintain and sustain your grades and such, and, uh. You know, it was a fantastic evening and to win the awards, like you said, it's, it's kind of all the, the dirty work that we do, like. Tonight's the night to, to really, it was great to see, you know, what, what we're working so hard for, for, for our students and our staff. Um, it's just, it's cool, and this is the fun stuff like that with the rounds, but I literally could, I mean, my cheeks hurt, I'm, I'm tired, but my cheeks hurt. And I was sitting there going, man, why am I starting to get a little headache, because I was smiling, so I just seeing that those, our young, those young gentlemen in our future. And then, you know, our, our teammates, our board teammates in, in the high school, it's just, it was an awesome meeting, so thank you, Dr. Will and Tony and. And Jen, and, and Bill for putting together the agenda, and I'm really glad that we had a smaller agenda, so we could really spend time. Tonight, listening to them and meeting with them and thanking them, so, um, it was just a, it just an awesome meeting. Thank you, thanks, and that, Dr. Willis.
And I want to key in, it's a great segue, thank you, Danny, because, you know, sitting here looking at these, these young women. Um, and, and again, that, that scholar athlete, you know. We, we focus, at least I focus so often, you know, throughout the year, on what they're teaching in the history class, or. Making sure that the new reading methods are working, and, you know, should they be carrying their Chromebooks and all, all of that stuff? That, that goes into the academic side, and, and then I sit in situations like this. And I realize how much each and every one of these adults learned, young adults learned on the athletic side.
Hmm.
I listen, Jayden and Bill, a- as you guys are talking about the things that your, your, uh, your teams. Are learning and, you know, the, how to be a good person, how to be a good teammate, the lessons that you're teaching them. We go back to the, the last rounds we had, and, you know, it, it's not just the athletics, it's, it's band.
Hmm.
You know, when, when we saw that, that class where there was, they, they were working on, I forget the song, but they had about five or six. A student, and they were working on the song, they were so different, each and every one of them. But even when the teacher stepped aside, they were helping each other, their instruments were, were a way of communicating with each other, and of, of growing with each other. And, you know, keeping that going, we're, we're looking at the parent of the year, and the teacher of the year. And three administrators that gave up their time because they wanted to help celebrate the people in front. And, and I just want us all to remember that when we're talking about education, when, when we're up here trying to make sure education is safe for talent. We're not just talking about the books, we're, we're talking about all of that, we're talking about the parent that's getting up at six o'clock in the morning to drive their kid to these events, or helping them study. We're, we're talking about the teachers, the custodians that are sneezing their way through cleaning some of this, all of that. As a community has to come together, so that each and every one of these children can thrive in it. If this is any indication, we're doing a pretty good job. Anybody else?
You wanna, um, we do have, uh, we do have finalists, or given us to having finalists for the, you know, curriculum administrator. So my, my goal here is to bring the finalists to you, finalists to your next meeting. It's December eighteenth.
I'll make sure you got that, you're good.
Any other comments? All right, uh, Dr. Willis, did you want to comment on our future, it looks like mid-January is our next?
Highly suggest, uh, the talent intermediate math intervention services, yeah. Instructional rounds, I think you would find it amazingly informative, uh, these two that are coming up. In January and February are really some of the core programming. Uh, and so math intervention, it's really good to learn as much as we can about that, especially as we enter budget season, you get to see the ins and outs of it. And why M T S S and interventions are so important, and you can ask them questions directly, talk to teachers directly, I think it's very, it'll be very informative for you. And then, uh, the inter-reading program, you may have heard me, uh, talk about that, that is the required state of Connecticut program. So we had, there are six programs that the state said you could choose from, and then, you know, I had written a grant to pay for some of it for the first year, and then ultimately we absorbed the rest. Over time, this is the one that we ended up going with in talent, and so you can get a handle on, uh, what it is. At the end, in all frankness, it's a huge lift, our teachers have been working very hard on it, there's actually been some frustration, and. You know, I'm sure they'd love to talk to you about it, there's not much we can do, because it's a state of Connecticut required program. But you'll get a, you'll get a real sense of what it is to be, you know, we're trying to implement a program of this size and density with kids, you know, um. You know, it's, it's a heavy lift, and so you, you'll get to really see what it means to do so, and how much resources it takes, and how much training it takes, how much energy it takes. How much our teachers are doing, uh, to adapt to the program. And so it's just a good thing for a board to see and understand, because you, I think it helps you understand staffing levels, like. You know, why, why we need who we need and where we need them, after everything. So those are the next two coming up, and I really put a plug in for them, the other ones are coming up March and, you know. Um, and after in May, so those would be great too, but the, these two coming up are great.
One more comment, I know I'm out of order here, but the, the snow day the other day did add to our.
We now have, because the teacher contract, um, negotiations, we have a hundred and eighty days with teachers, and that's officially in the contract with them. We don't have a hundred eighty-two days now, so you may remember in the past, you had two days that the board could sort of entertain doing something with, and. And we'd have to get the, we have to work with the union on that, but now it's a hundred and eighty days, so we have the minimum number of days, what's the, the, the. Required number of days for the state of Connecticut, so that means that every snow day we get, we push out by shit. Unless you did something like, which you'll never do, remove April break.
So.
Remove a tag here or there, right?
Did what we do on the twentieth push us out the day?
No.
Okay.
It's only when you lose a, a whole day.
Got you.
Goodbye.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm okay. Sorry, I, my answer was, question was answered.
Okay, good. Jay, telling you from a student perspective, we will have an uprising if we touch April break too much.
And, and let's be clear, at this moment, we are not.
No, no, no. At the risk of failing the dodgeball class, if I'm not gonna.
They have a student in uprising.
Well, staff, no kidding, all right, there's just more students to. I will entertain motion, Jerry? So moved, second, any comments? Or, or against? All right, Jayden? Hi, Jen. Dana?
Hi.
Really?
Hi.
Really? Really? Okay. Motion pass, thank you all.
Yes, thank you.